Mayor is going to be a few minutes late, we believe, and at this time I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Councilor Gina and Steve are going to do this presentation and it's a follow-up from the retreat on the issue of asphalt versus concrete and the relative lifespans and maintenance costs associated with two different types of material. And we've got a little study that we had Albert Haff do to compare on in a general sense, I mean, there's no two projects that are identical, so you kind of have to make some assumptions about projects and then you compare two products apples to apples. Sometimes one might be better or more cost-effective than another depending on certain circumstances or sometimes even the price of oil can modify things. But they did make some assumptions to give you a feel for the relative differences and then Steve and Gina will go over those and then really what we need to do is make some decisions about those standards and how you want to apply them to the current street CIP. So that'll affect how much of that CIP engineering program going into the future for the next year or so. So with that, Steve, take it away.
And just to add a few points to that, we have an engineering staff, Mr. Ferris here, David and Jeff are here to help with putting these numbers and work together. So if we get into any technical questions, I'm going to refer a lot of that to those folks. Just for some definitions and clarification of what concrete is, HMAC, most of us know that as an asphalt street, it is called asphalt and concrete. And PCC is more Portland cement concrete, which around here we call concrete streets. So they're both concrete streets in that definition, but I'll use asphalt and concrete to differentiate the two. The program that you're going to hear tonight basically includes all the construction costs as well as all future maintenance costs. We will have study and broken this out on the next page, but except for the type of concrete or asphalt that you use, asphalt or concrete, the remainder, the survey, the engineering, excavation, separated drainage work, et cetera, is all the same whether it's a concrete street or an asphalt street. So just some points of clarification there. Also, we're looking on the analysis that Haff presented, it's a 31-foot back-to-back curb, the backside of one curb on one side of the street to the backside of the curb on the other side of the street. If we use asphalt, we'd be looking at a five-inch mountable curb and a 12-inch concrete gutter. Then you lay the asphalt between the two gutter pans on each side of the street, so that's how the asphalt street would look. And we'd use two types of asphalt, one, the base, two courses, two-inch each, uses a larger rock within the asphalt, it's a little more, it's rough in driving status, and then on top of it you put a type D, I'm sorry, a type, I got the numbers right, yeah, type D, it's more of a smooth riding asphalt, it's got the finer granular material in it on rock to make a smoother riding surface. Concrete street would be a five-inch integral street, curb concrete, street concrete, it's all poured uniformly at that point. They have study and we were looking at a 350-foot city block length. The asphalt per 350-foot has averaged out about 48,000 and the concrete street had about 60,000. Again, the initial cost is about 8% asphalt over concrete. Design life, we've all heard this, it ranges from anywhere from 10 to 15 years on asphalt to 20 to 30 years on concrete. In half report, we're using 10 years for asphalt life and 20 years on the concrete. This is before major repairs will be made or needed. For example, on year 10 of the asphalt, you're looking at some $36,000, and again, these are estimates, repairing about 20% of the road surface using asphalt. Year 20, you'd go again another 36,000 for repair, again, about 20% of the road surface would need to be repaired. So at some point in that 20, 25-year period, you're going to redo an asphalt street, you're going to complete it, probably mill it under and start over at that point. On a concrete street with a 20-year life, you're looking somewhere in year 20, 25, spending about 23,000 on some panel repairs and maintenance. Now, there's other maintenance that's involved in concrete streets and asphalt streets is we try to do crack sealing, try to put a about 2 minutes of type material in those cracks to prevent moisture from entering into the road surface. Keep the moisture out of the subgrade, it's a lot better if we can do that and don't have the freeze-thaw effect on some conditions like we had last week. The initial, again, construction cost of asphalt streets about 48,000 versus 61,000 or 60,000 for the concrete. And on page sheet five, you see the two periods of maintenance, year 10 and year 20 on the asphalt. So if you look at concrete over 20-year lifespan, it's being cheaper, less expensive than performing the asphalt in the two maintenance periods that you would have in those timeframes. We also have included a 3% inflation rate, thus making future costs about, of the asphalt being about 56% higher than the concrete over the life, plus the extended life of added maintenance to the asphalt street. On the concrete street, again, the concrete is higher. If we do the listing of roads, and I'm going to move back to a list of roads real quick that we have, and that's going to be, go to sheet three. If you look at, those are the streets that we're looking at are the areas of town that we're looking at, those have been broken out into various streets, which we'll get to in a moment, but those major areas will be included in this project as far as whether we do concrete or asphalt streets. If we use concrete, and we can do all the concrete streets as listed except for the North Mill Street area, that's Mill Street from Lake Park, just north of Lake Park to Tenny Drive, East Shore Drive and West Shore Drive. So, and that, if we do those areas in the concrete with the amount of funding that we have currently available, we would need an additional million dollars to do those projects in concrete. Cost of, again, utilizing concrete does not include sidewalks, additional right-of-way or securing easements. So if we go into old town area and some of the smaller streets, Elm Hatch or those areas, and we do not have sufficient right-of-way to put sidewalks in, then we would have to obtain those. Hopefully, we will get those donated and move in that direction. However, we went through this process about six or eight years ago with Richland Street and unable to secure the easement to right-of-way that we needed to perform that task. Therefore, those fundings went over to Purnell Street and were able to complete that project just west of Cowan to Mill Street.
Let me back up a little bit in time. If you'll remember from the retreat, the initial proposal was to do the streets that we had listed using asphalt and using a design that accomplished the repaving of the street within the existing right-of-way. We did not anticipate buying any new right-of-way, very similar to the Milton Street project where we just came in, established a new curb line, put the new pavement in between the curbs as Steve indicated earlier, and went on down the road with no sidewalks or any additional improvements. And that was something that we could do because we didn't acquire any new right-of-way. When we acquire new right-of-way, we bear additional costs and you can bear considerable delay timewise, and sometimes it could result in a failure of the project as he described up here on.
Richland?
Richland. So our recommendation is that you do not add those types of things to the project if you can avoid it unless a neighborhood, and I think this came up during the retreat, can unite somehow together and say, okay, we're going to donate all the right-of-way we need for sidewalks, for example, which case I can put maybe three feet of sidewalk adjacent to that rollover curb on both sides or maybe one side, however it turns out, and I don't have to bear any right-of-way costs. But they would all have to come together and they would all have to do that in a fairly time-sensitive manner for that to occur. Otherwise, we would just, again, be going back to the original design standard. The, again, the problem would be delaying, delaying the project, but the other problem, even if you get the donations, as far as going with this, you're going to bear additional costs for the sidewalks that is not included in this review of total costs. So there's some variables out there that can affect your overall project budget. I'm not sure if we want to go there or not, is a thing I want you to kind of keep in mind.
So about six feet additional concrete, three-foot sidewalks on each side?
That as a general rule, but it's going to vary, depends on what else is in there. There might be a cut.
Would the sidewalk have to be as thick?
No, it's not. It's four. But there's a lot of variables there, there's trees that might be in the way, there's usually utilities of some kind of, you'll remember, that's what kind of threw the monkey wrench into the Richland project, is that we were trying to avoid utilities and we actually had to do it a little bit further out and gain more right-of-way and the owners just didn't want to do it. But we can't put a sidewalk in and have a telephone pole right in the middle of the sidewalk. So those are the problems associated with trying to retrofit some of these old areas without buying new right-of-way. It's sometimes a lot easier just to not necessarily. But people might want that, when you put that concrete street in, especially if you put concrete in. Get in a concrete street with a curb and then they kind of expect the sidewalks and all the other goodies with it.
I understand that that may be an expectation, but we go back to the retreat where I first asked you about the numbers, you know, I looked at your asphalt and your concrete, my mind started turning and I started thinking, wait a minute, it seems to me it's cheaper over, you know, over time to do concrete, which is what the study now verifies, that after a 20-year period, we would be, give or take, 56% ahead financially to have gone concrete. I realize that you can't separate because of public expectations, you can't entirely separate sidewalks and additional right-of-way, all these other issues from the core issue. But for me, for my question, that's still a little bit of an apple from oranges, I mean, the question is for me about the road. And again, you're saying, well, all these other factors now come into play, well, all these other factors potentially come into play no matter what you put down. I mean, you pave somebody's road, they may expect sidewalks no matter what you put down there just because you put down concrete curbs. So I'm still back to where I was.
We didn't do it on Milton.
Well, no, you didn't.
And if you say that's what you're going to do, then that's what you're going to do.
Well, it doesn't change my question that initiated this, it doesn't change that question, which is.
No, all it does is it changes the funding that you need compared to the funding that you have.
Right.
So, and that's the only reason we were bringing it up before, is that we weren't counting on expending those funds on sidewalks. If you want to expend those funds on sidewalks and right-of-way and relocation of utilities, then it's going to shrink the number of projects you have or you're going to have to dump a lot more money into the pot. That's the only reason we bring it up.
But I'm still focused, for me, I'm still focused on the road and its lifetime and its cost over time and where it puts me, I mean, it puts the city financially 10 years, 20 years down the road, that's.
That's the first part of the equation.
That was always the first question.
Sure, that's why we're answering one first.
One other comment and what Mr. King had talked about is the drainage. A lot of the old town area is flat, topo, there's very little drainage, most of it is either sheet flow out to the street or in a barge ditch, very little drainage, and so if you go much more than what you're, what's there now, you get into a drainage issue. We did some modifications to the drainage on Milton, it works relatively well. We haven't had a lot of heavy rains yet, we've had a couple, but it seemed to handle it fine. But that is a major issue if you go and start moving outside of your existing footprint of the roadway, how do that affects driveways, the topo of the yards, where it drains to, because a lot of people have made modifications kind of in the middle of the yard to keep the water from the street from going into their, they've kind of ramped it up in the middle or built like a small levee or a dam between the street and their home. We had some of that over on Milton Street, so.
These streets include stormwater drainage?
Yes.
All that can be done is just a money issue and a budgeting issue, something would have to give. The more you do, the more it has to give.
So we had a list of about seven neighborhoods earlier, and the first one we come to is northwest Old Town, these are streets that's indicated as your priority. And so you go through that list mainly in the Old Town area, just west at this point. And if you do concrete streets, 3.1 million, asphalt streets, 2.5 million. So there is, there is a little high cost involved at that point. Now, these streets, just my caveat into this is that you have these streets, mainly the heaviest piece of equipment that's on there is going to be a fire truck, an ambulance and a garbage truck. There's not a lot of commercial activity on these streets, so it's again putting some six-foot concrete in these neighborhoods versus an asphalt street, what the wear and tear is on those streets. In the summertime, asphalt tends to be damaged if you have a high heat and some heavy loads and traffic on. Railroad streets are prime examples, the current asphalt street runs a lot of commercial vehicles and it's basically gone to gravel at this point, and that's what happens to it over time. So these are the streets in the northwest Old Town, we have some picture ratings, hopefully somewhat visible, but I believe you have a little backup, a little easier to read, but these give a condition rating from good down to basically failed. We have a few of those in our slides. Northeast Old Town is Harris Walters Henrietta and Leonard, these are mainly east of Mill Street. And again, your cost estimates, 1.7 million for concrete and 1.3 million for the asphalt. Kenzie Henry, there are some streets in this area that we performed some general maintenance on probably four, five, six years ago. I recommend those when we get to that slide, if we go ahead and redo those, I think they're reaching their age at this point. Concrete's 2.5 million, 2 million for the asphalt. And on the map, you'll see, I believe it's Ash. Yep. Ash, we did some several years ago and down by the park on the east end of Ash and Birch Street. And then Mesquite, we did some repave there and I believe that may have been part of that development there, but I can't, I don't remember.
That raises another question about, those are streets that are identified as in being reasonably good condition, satisfactory or above, but do you tear them up and replace them if they're in reasonably good shape? Certainly if you went to a concrete standard, you probably would have to.
Well, we'll bring this up, any street that is currently concrete, we did not put in with the asphalt option, we left strictly concrete except for Railroad Street, which is asphalt, it's a commercial, heavy traffic flow area, so we did not put an asphalt on Railroad Street. Okay. Next, Serendipity Village, several years ago, I want to say five to seven years ago, David, we went through the Serendipity Village and did a major concrete replacement project in that area. There were several streets that we were unable to accomplish. These streets, Wildfire, Fox Creek, Foxwood, Madison and Timber were those that were kind of off to the side, they were smaller streets, better condition, did not have a lot of traffic, but we have a lot of water line leaks now and these areas need to be repaired and go ahead and complete the subdivision. We do have the funding to do that. Estimated cost is 1.4 million on this project, so, and again, we did not assume an asphalt option at this point on existing concrete streets. I believe there's one street in there that may be asphalt, it's a short piece, but I believe it was Foxwood or one of them, I can't remember which one it was, but it was a short piece that I believe was asphalt. Next one is Railroad Street, again, this is Main Street, about a peanut house to Purnell. There's a small section of Railroad Street from Purnell to 121 that is existing concrete. We did some fair enough shake to begin just north of this intersection to Main. This is a wider street because it is commercial and literally it backs up from railroad right-of-way and the tracks to the businesses on the east side of the roadway, so we've taken all the space there and we'll have a sidewalk on the east side, basically from the rail station down to 121 Business and back up from that.
On Stephen Railroad Street, that other side of going on south there on Railroad Street towards the landfill?
Yes, sir.
Remembering how bad, before we got that built all the way through to Hebron, remember how bad Bennett continually just got, it went bad and it was concrete. Is it better to go ahead and build concrete on that than it is asphalt, just repair the asphalt, because I mean, we had to repair Bennett all the time?
Bennett's 35 years old, it's reached its life many years ago, but we've done panel repairs trying to save it.
Right.
So I believe you'll see in the next 10 years Bennett being completely rebuilt from 35 to Main. There's a lot of heavy truck traffic going there.
Well, that's what I mean, so that's what I'm saying, I guess my deal, so railroad going south, would we be just as good off from 121 going railroad towards the landfill to where it hooks up there at the park? Would it be just as cost-effective for us to do that in asphalt going through that area instead of concrete?
We just built that.
We just built that.
I'm saying in the future is what I'm saying.
Oh, in the future.
Because it seems like that just continually gets torn up, I mean, it's already starting to look.
New Railroad Street?
Yeah.
Go ahead, David.
No, I think the park, we're having some problems with this, the park that the landfill actually built going from the entrance room down to Hebron Parkway, they're on the northbound side.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we've been working with the bonding company for some time now and they recently told us that they don't think it's a materials or workmanship issue, and so, you know, we're at that point where, you know, either we're going to decide we need to argue with them or just fight or have to fix it ourselves, but we haven't made that decision, we just got that information recently.
Streets like that raise an interesting question.
Well, that was my point with the cost factor, those streets are going to get torn up.
And it's, there's no, I don't think it's not a panacea, 99 out of 100 times I'll say build concrete, but it's not necessarily a panacea, and you will see occasions where you build concrete and over a relatively short period of time, you have failures and they're pretty big failures.
South Edmonds.
South Edmonds, over on Fox, on Valley Parkway, on that subdivision, Westwood Estates, we're literally two years old, we've had failures over there. So it can happen both ways. As a general rule, I think what we're saying is concrete probably works better, if it turns out that you wind up having to replace the concrete over and over again, then you probably need to back off on that.
That was my thought, just on that section I'm talking about, that goes by the landfill, that hilarious.
The other comment on South Edmonds though is that it seems to be, seems to me that there are just isolated places on South Edmonds that continue to fail, the whole street is a problem.
Biggest problem on South Edmonds is the ditch line for the drainage, the original ditch line for the drainage, and that's where you see most of the failures on the northbound side.
Yep.
What else do you have to say?
Well, I was just going to add that, that area on Railroad Street, the portion of the landfill built was an eight-inch thick concrete section when we built Railroad Street going north of 10-inch concrete. So frankly, you know, what the landfill did was probably a little bit thinner of concrete than what we would have done ourselves. The other issue is that there was a lot of fill placed there prior to construction, so I think there's maybe some issue with fill combined with the fact that it is a thinner concrete street section.
For asphalt or concrete, I mean, when you disturb the surface substantially with a drainage pipe, for example, or water line, you're going to have some inherent settling problems, no matter what kind of compaction requirements you put in the concrete, whatever kind of inspection requirements you have, that stuff just moves, it's just, the soil's just, the epicenter of bad soil is Edmonds at 121. I remember walking into TI's plant one day, years after they had built it and abandoned the section, and they had the surface of their floor that had dropped about that far, about eight to 10 inches below where it used to been, you could see it where it used to been on the pole where it was painted, one of the support poles, and it dropped eight inches, so.
Okay, I need to be right on the question.
We, again, our reasoning, when we talked about Railroad Street at 1.1 down to Bennett and through, was based on the heavy truck traffic and load, they, concrete would be our strongest support, during the summer, those trucks loaded and everything we had to take that area.
Steve, and that estimate was a 10-inch concrete. The estimate for that part of Railroad is a 10-inch concrete.
Okay, we beat it up. There's a section, we're talking about, the greener, the green portion at the bottom, that's a good piece of existing concrete.
2.1.
Midway Road, this is a county bond project that we were able to secure from Huffines east of the river to, it's on Midway, from Midway out to Station Six, where it transitioned into a concrete section at 544. That project is county-funded, it's about 4.4 million dollars in our match, and it's going to be close to a million dollar, 900 to a million dollars on that match, so that is a great road. This says the county will construct the road, we will construct the road and seek the reimbursement from the county, so if you don't want to regular wear that, I think the county must get in building a road project, so. All right. And you'll see a section of asphalt from Huffines to Paulers Prairie Road, relatively good shape, we've done some maintenance on it two, four, five years ago somewhere in that area. Again, although this is green, we recommend and we are submitting to the county and they're paying for it, that'd be a full concrete street, so you'll see that through that entire section from Huffines to 544. Indian Oaks, the subdivision was built mid-'80s, I believe, somewhere in that area. Indian Oaks, the subdivision was built mid-eighties, I believe, somewhere in that area, and it was a rural aspect of Lewisville. They wanted asphalt roads, barditches, those kinds of amenities, and so. In a variance, and a very expansive place in that area. The center, epicenter, I believe, is going to be this point. It's got a trash truck and a whole one twice in the back. Cost of going concrete is 1.46. Again, we've got to deal with drainage, how we handle the barditches, et cetera, getting the water, I would assume, and I'll seek David's opinion. This probably will not have a curb and gutter. It will just be concrete surface, kind of like the area in front of your street.
Concrete road. It's got a concrete surface that blends into the soil, the ditch.
Yeah, it's concrete now off of Valley, right?
Coming in to Indian Oaks?
As soon as you come in, it's asphalt.
Transition is concrete.
No, I meant Indian Oaks.
So, Badwood Brook or?
Spring something?
Spring Creek? Yeah, it is asphalt. I see the AC out there. You're correct.
So, the price per block that you quoted earlier, Steve, in Indian Oaks, that price doesn't include the gutter and the curb, and the reason I'm asking that question is, if we get into having to make choices about what to do with the available funds, I'd like to know what, yeah, what's included in your price per block. I think you had.
As far as concrete, as far as asphalt, asphalt would be just a transition, just like the concrete. It would blend right into the surface of the yard.
So, there is, so that.
Here.
Yeah, so that price per block.
Is less.
Is less than in Indian Oaks, right?
Right, back up the street.
Yeah, the price per block you gave us was back to back.
Yeah.
On the half study, yes. We estimated, staff estimated these numbers, half do not on these projects. David, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I mean, all these cost estimates for the specific streets came from staff. The numbers that were in the half study were just general numbers, you know, just something general based on a thirty-one foot street anywhere.
So, we can't really take the half number and apply it directly to all, any of these projects, because we don't know which of these include curb and.
But the ratio would be about the same, wouldn't it? If you're going to put curb and gutter, on asphalt, the curb and gutter on.
Yeah, it might be a little bit different here with the Indian Oaks, because in this case, there is no curb and gutter. I mean, there's no curb and gutter now, so.
Right.
Right, but there won't, there wouldn't be any if you put asphalt back down.
Right. Yeah, my question was, according to the price, we're not including curb and gutter.
Oh, this is.
For this one?
That's what I'm talking about, Indian Oaks.
Which doesn't have it now, so.
What I was getting at, though, is that, basically what you've been saying is that wherever you are, and you're comparing concrete to asphalt, the concretes are going to be about twenty, twenty-five percent more.
Up front.
Up front.
The cost right there, which is what people look at, and I guarantee you, when you want to look at long-term, when we're looking at dollars and how many roads we can fix, you look at how many roads you fix, how many miles of road. That's what's going to be looked at. I mean, it is, and it comes up every time when we do these things.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Division, some of the streets we have, again, you'll see some that are decent shape, they're in fair shape, so, and when they, if you go into concrete on those, we would do all of them at that point.
What's the ramification of, because they had a variance for asphalt, what's the ramification of that? We can just go in and do it?
Yeah. Should we just get variance granted at the time of development, see what further the rural look, that's how they kind of sold it, they wanted a rural environment, no curbs.
Couple of broken down trucks on the side.
And some folks have actually asked for, to remove the bargeage, and it's just, have no drainage system, there's not going to be a mechanism to do that without a major drainage system installed. Northfield Street is from about three hundred feet north of Lake Park, and it's concrete four lane to that point, which transitions down to the two lane. This is Highway 377, 77. And runs down to the lake to the north, and then road dead ends, turns left on Tenney, and then there's two side streets, which are east shore and west shore. Estimated cost for this area is 2.5 million, concrete, 2 million on the asphalt, and it's beginning to show its age as well. We have some, some of the crossings where we have storm pipe are beginning to settle in now at this point. It's good base, good base material, but we did, just north, Lake Park, North Beach Baptist Church, they just installed the public parks area in that zone. If there's going to be any kind of improvements in the future, long range, I think at some point there will be probably some modifications from that transition from four lane to two lane down to probably Oak Ridge, where you can get some traffic out of Lake Park a little more easily in time. You've got the right of way, but that's, that's a long term, twenty-plus year out probably at that point, unless you want to do it in today, today's time, but I see that somewhere in the future of at least extending probably that four lane down to Oak Ridge.
Does the state have any interest in any of that from north of Main Street?
Not that I'm aware, no, I don't believe they do.
Did they just abandon it or gave it to the city or walked away?
I'll be fifty percent unclear of who owns the property.
Okay.
I know Main Street, thirty-five to 121, state still owns.
All you got to do is mow it once and it's ours, right?
We don't know everything.
Steve, I can't quite tell even when I look at this, what the cover code is on Tenney and West Shore and East Shore, what are they?
The writing is a fifty-three, it's not a fair.
Fair, oh, West Shore.
Here's why.
On Tenney.
On Tenney.
Here's why I ask, is that, once we make that turn on to Tenney, then we're into a, you know, fairly low traffic area, and I'm wondering, is this something, if Tenney, West Shore, East Shore and West Shore is something that could be postponed as opposed to going ahead and finishing that mill up to Tenney?
It's up to you, yes, that's, that's fine. The asphalt on east shore and west shore, and I live on west shore.
You know the area well, don't you?
But it's, it's a small, probably inch and a half, two inches max overlay. We've done probably ten years ago, starting the alligator, correct, but you're right. The heaviest truck traffic on that is going to be the ambulance, fire truck, and garbage truck, and an occasional semi that comes through when they get lost, basically.
Didn't mean you picked on the neighborhood.
So, we get down to basically concrete versus asphalt, and you, say this first, the concrete streets dropped out of the top number, Serendipity Railroad and Midway, that 2.3.1 million, 2.2 million dollars there for concrete, so it took it out because we're only going to do concrete on those areas. On the asphalt versus concrete, concrete is 11.2 million versus nine million on the asphalt, so you've got about a free, about 2.2 million dollar spread there to get some streets, additional streets accomplished. Okay, on the, here's a breakdown of the streets, you put them all in concrete, or the, actually, this is the one that we have all the funding on. This is what you have in the bank right now, thirteen-six. If you go into funding these projects, including North Mill, Serendipity Railroad, Midway, you've got about 12.376. You do, I'm sorry, you do everything in asphalt and concrete on Serendipity Railroad, Midway, you've got 12.4 that you're spending there, and that leaves you about 1.2 million to do additional streets on. You could use this additional money. We've got several other neighborhoods that are, are beginning to be in the poor condition. The Timberbrook project is one of them. This is south of Bel Air and east of Edmonds in this area. That Timberbrook subdivision is relatively old, and it's going to be something like we've done at Westwood One, Westwood Two in those areas, Serendip. If we do all concrete, if we do all the streets in concrete, including North Mill, you need about a million dollars additional funding to do the project. So, you got, if you do asphalt and three concrete streets, you've got a million in savings you can put somewhere else. If you do them all in concrete, I need a million dollars roughly to do the projects, all the concrete.
Now, where it says would be unable to do mill, is that even if you add the million?
No, if we did it, if we did it in a million, we do north.
And what he means there is you wouldn't be able to do all, you still have some money for mill, it just wouldn't be all the money that you're looking for.
Right.
So, maybe that's where you apply, you know, a different set of limits.
Correct.
All these things you can change the limits around and alter the streets and generate savings for a little thing.
On the utility costs, anytime you do a roadway, we try to do water sewer and any kind of drainage repair that's needed, if they have drainage, most of these do not. So, you already, you already have set funding to do replacement projects on water and sewer to accomplish those in those areas. We're also looking at, let's freeze up some money, we have the east side, Gravity Sewer, it was called Indian Creek Lift Station that you funded several years ago. We were anticipating development on the east side out by Josie, Austin Ranch, et cetera. It's been delayed somewhat. Those are bond monies that we need to utilize. You have a, you've offered up, not all, you have granted us permission to go out and sell bonds in May for the new water tower at College and I-35, and so, what we're recommending is that we take the monies from this Indian Creek project and help fund the water tower, as well as make any additional repairs needed as far as the funding goes. So, I think we can fund all of the water work projects on all of these streets with existing funds that we have, plus, plus do the water tower. Bring the water tower in because this is, this is one of the issues I think you need to know when we're trying to find money to do these other water line improvements. So, what we're asking for tonight is, or they start thinking about how you want us to handle these priority road projects, asphalt, concrete mixture, and we're seeking some direction.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, Gina, and the mayor's here now, we'll turn the rest of the meeting over to him.
Or you thought, cost you ten percent more, basically, to go concrete, right?
Twenty, twenty.
Well, but if I looked at your bill there, it was fourteen million dollars, and it was only a million dollars, oh, we were a million dollars short, that's what it was.
Million dollars over.
Well, that's what, we were a million dollars short on funding.
If you do asphalt.
If we do asphalt.
Or they require a million dollars more. That's the side of ledger you're looking at.
I'm still keen on concrete.
So, say, if we do everything in concrete, you're like, next to last slide, sure, we're a million dollars short that we'd have to make up from general fund or something.
Thirteen-six, right? Am I looking at the right thing? Everything in concrete is going to cost thirteen-six.
Fourteen-six.
Fourteen-six.
Fourteen-six, and you have.
Thirteen-six.
You need two point, about 2.3 million dollars more, is that right? Go back to that other.
It was a million fourteen.
Right there, if you look at concrete on the left-hand side, add all that up, you've got fourteen point six-three or something like that.
Go down one more slide. Yeah, go down one more, keep going down. There you go, right there at the bottom, see what it says? We're short. If we did everything concrete, we're short a million dollars.
Okay, you're short because, go back up, that's what you have, thirteen-six, you need fourteen-six, and you have thirteen-six.
What is, is it if you replace with what's there? If there's asphalt there, you replace asphalt if it's concrete? I can't see.
Nine million dollars.
Nine million dollars.
Nine million dollars to replace your existing streets.
Existing asphalt streets with asphalt.
And concrete, concrete?
Well, with the exception of railroad, because we're doing railroad with.
Yeah.
There are exceptions there, and then Indian Oaks, maybe?
Asphalt.
You're going to go asphalt instead of, they want a concrete.
They want concrete.
Okay.
Our son, let me bet this way. We've heard from people that want concrete.
Sure. On the, on the nine million dollar number, is that everything, or is that just the asphalt? What about the concrete part? Does that include it too?
Concrete part is another two million, so you're at twelve million, twelve point three.
But what it, replace like with what's there now?
Twelve point three-seven, or you're at twelve point three million to replace what's there? It's existing plus the three concrete streets. You have thirteen-six, so you have 1.2 million dollars left over to do other streets.
So, to summarize this slide, everything on that top section from Northwest Old Town to North Mill Street area, that's all currently asphalt.
Correct.
The ones down below may or may not currently be asphalt, but they are required to be concrete by your estimate.
And that's twelve something?
That's twelve point three-seven-six.
We've got about twelve million there, we've got thirteen, and if you went concrete on the ones that needed concrete, you're talking about fourteen something?
Yeah, you go a million down.
So, a million up or a million down?
A million up, million down.
I, I, the concrete is the way to go. I don't disagree with that. In my neighborhood, I don't want the concrete. I just, asphalt's fine with me, and I don't want the drainage and all this, if the bargeage works just fine. But some people want to change what they got.
Except for the ones in the back of your neighborhood in Crete.
Oh, down there, that's different. You can have all, the bargeages are this deep, and there's six foot of water, so. That's a whole different thing.
Yeah, you're on the high side.
Most of the areas where we hear about going to a different standard on drainage is in the Old Town area.
Yeah.
You want the regular curbs, regular gutters, full blown drainage, pipe, the whole nine elements.
There's a topographic issue there.
Well, there's topographic issues that would have to be resolved, engineering wise, I mean, they have to be.
That's going to be a major drainage project, but closed pipe on that street in Old Town.
What did you, what did you miss say?
If you were to, sorry, if you were to go in and put a, what I call a pipe storm, a closed pipe system for drainage, that's inlet boxes, curtain gutter, if you can even get the drainage to work because of the flat top hole of the land, that's a major, major, multimillion dollar stormwater project. Very expensive to do a closed system.
And any of those Old Town streets right here that we're looking, any of those streets up top that we're looking at have that closed pipe system right now?
It's not only, it's not only in the area, but you have to transport what you collect in storm pipe and get it downstream to another system. Right now.
Some of the downstream improvements.
Streets, some of it's long bargeages. It ends up in some pipe at some point, but a lot of it's open drainage.
If you really wanted to go that route, I think what we would recommend is that you take all the Old Town projects off for the, go to the drawing board with the engineers and see what the cost would be to put the full blown drainage in.
But eventually it's making, like you said, eventually it's making its way to where it needs to go.
Yeah, today, in the future, it'll be the same thing.
Maybe they can.
Although, I mean, these estimates from the Old Town area, you know, there, there's some drainage money built in, but it's not full blown, but it is more like what we did on the bond.
Are there any streets on that, that ten column there, that in the concrete there, that you would think it would not be wise to put in concrete? Beth, I'm asking you, Steve.
Are there any?
You and David. Are there any streets there that you got on the, there on, left- Are there any streets there that you got on the con, there on the left-hand side that you've got concrete versus asphalt? Are there, are there any of those streets that you think it would not be prudently wise to put concrete on there? You think it would be better with asphalt than concrete?
Well, I think the Northwest Old Town, you've got very little truck traffic in Northwest Old Town, it's mostly residential. So that's probably a safer bet there. Go with asphalt than it would be in some of those other areas where you might have some industrial businesses and stuff.
But you're saying safer bet, and he's saying it would be, he wants to know what would be better.
There's nothing, there's nothing that would, there's nothing wrong with doing concrete in any of these locations. But if you didn't wanna do concrete, and wanted to do asphalt, your, your safer bet would be Northwest Old Town.
Is that very much different than Indian Oaks?
Well, the problem with Indian Oaks is, is the soil conditions out there are so, I mean, they're incrementally worse than they are almost anywhere else in town. And our services folks have some repairs out there, and it seems like every time they do something, they're back out there again, doing it again. So, you know, I made the comment that that's probably one area where it makes some sense to use concrete because concrete can bridge dense soils where asphalt can form to the shape of the subgrade.
And a working example is my street, which is concrete and has never been, the only repair that's ever been done is a little, small area on the corner, on a, next to a driveway. That's it. The street's in great shape. And it's, what, thirty years old?
It's in that same.
It's low traffic, but then most of Indian Oaks, except for the Babbling Brook, you know, the big three streets, it's low traffic, so.
It's a soils, it's a soils issue in Indian Oaks as opposed to Frampton.
Isn't all of those, most of the heavy traffic's gonna be the garbage trucks, right? Everybody, every, every street's gonna have that.
I, well, but I have- The street hasn't been disturbed as much.
I don't have a classic bar ditch, but I do have a swale in the front yard.
It wasn't disturbed for storm drain. I can point out a lot of streets in that same area, mine for example, that was disturbed for storm drain and it's cracked up. The other thing on my street is it's got a considerable slope downhill as you go to the tail end, so it drains.
And now although that we're talking about there did not include doing storm drain, right? Some of them are just have-
Mine are draining, mine are draining, they're draining.
But I think that's back to the comment I made earlier, I mean, I'm trying to focus mainly on this material versus that material for the street and everything else to me is an ancillary subject. And I'm not saying it's not an important subject, I'm saying it doesn't change my view of what to do with the street.
The way I'm looking at it, we've got the twelve million something. We've got, that, that, for the asphalt, or like to like with a few exceptions. And then we have an additional amount of money that we can do some of the concrete streets from asphalt to concrete. And then we gotta see if we come up with another million or so dollars, if we wanna do all of them that way.
We can come up with a million or so dollars or, for example-
Or go the end of the streets down by some-
The tail end of streets, for example. I don't know how much that's worth, but. Like he was saying, if we were just to go, go everything concrete except for Northwest Old Town, that saves us, right there, we're in the clear, right? About six hundred, which-
Getting close.
Taking it off the other side. Is that right?
Yeah.
And we could, we could shave some of the scope off and adjust the numbers if you want us to do that.
Cash, this feels like a CDBG meeting.
Same, same issue.
I think where we would really have a problem if somebody had, assuming that people would think that concrete is better than asphalt, that when you're trying to take something from concrete to asphalt, that's where you're gonna have a lot of-
That's where, that's where our comment-
Can't go here or not.
Right.
We're not going that way, are we?
No. That's where the problem is.
Once it's concrete.
Because if you're going to concrete from asphalt, it's appear to be an upgrade.
Do that on Main Street in Old Town.
Yeah, do, follow the state's lead.
We still have-
We do that on Main Street in Old Town, what's that, concrete to asphalt?
And we have asphalt's in the core between Charles and Mill Street is asphalt. And it's held up very well.
Very few repairs.
But it's also probably a heavier grade, probably a lot bigger, about the state's standards.
What's the different levels? What are, what is a typical neighborhood on asphalt put down?
Eight to two inch.
And what would be the next step up?
Four inch.
And then state is eight to ten?
Yes.
And how much have you got reserved?
We got a million dollars spare.
I think we better have more than a million there. That's not, that's not, how much do we have in there that's not legal reserve? I would say somewhere around fifteen, isn't it? So you've got the money if you wanna do it. It's just like you took money out to build the, the dog park or the, the-
Shelter.
Shelter, thank you. Took five million out. So you've got a million out if you wanna do it all. You wanna do it all, you got a million.
But you might wanna do underground, utility relocation.
Yeah, we got, that's another issue. I, I would like to see as, as best we can, but in some places, asphalt is the better way to go, in my opinion. But you're not gonna have any, very many neighborhoods complaining going from asphalt to concrete. The next question's gonna be, is like y'all were saying, now I want the ditch, the underground storm sewer and all that stuff. But some people want that, some people don't. Let me ask you this, if you went in and did all concrete but didn't do the drainage in some areas, like, you know, like Rudy's talking about there, when you came back later to do in, would you at that point in time have to tear up those concrete streets, or would you be able to do it without?
Yeah, not much.
You have to change the grade.
So if that's, if you're looking to do it in the future, be better off, I guess, like Rudy's saying, doing asphalt before, until you do the drainage and then do the concrete?
I wouldn't spend any money on any of them if I was thinking of doing drainage.
Well, I'm talking about in the next ten years.
Ten years, I wouldn't do any of them.
Maybe just thirty?
Thirty, maybe you could get a ways back then, you know. It depends on your time horizon.
And that's a major drainage day at that point.
Are any of these areas that we're looking at now have major drainage issues that we need to consider it? Do the closed pipe drainage?
I think it's mostly an aesthetic. It's an aesthetic and it's a perception issue either, you know, part of town has it, this part of town doesn't have it. One of the ditches work.
But if you keep, if you keep what they have, you're not taking anything away either, so.
And again, it's perception, because we just talked about a couple areas on the west side that don't have it, Indian Oaks.
So if somebody in the Old Town says, you know, well, we get this street, you can go, well, go over to Indian Oaks and they got this treated too?
It seems as though in the places where we went in, Westwood, you know, those places where we went, and even Southwoods, we did it several years ago. North Shore, South Shore. Thank you, North Shore or South Shore, we done? Seems like the neighborhoods started upgrading themselves. The property owners themselves started taking a little war. Either that or it was town. Pride in, in those streets. It just seems that way. You drive through those streets now, and the houses seem like they're taking, being better taken care of than they were. Remember how bad it was during construction, the whole, I know. Oh, it was terrible. Believe me, I- And we heard about it. They can tell you, they throw me around, I got lots of calls.
I got lots of calls about it.
There's a whole thing at one time?
Always exaggerating, but not always.
Anytime you're gonna put down a new street, almost regardless of the type of, I'm sure you're, you're gonna see, it's just gonna look better.
Yeah.
Building looks fantastic.
Looks great.
So are you on it? Are you on?
Do I like concrete?
Do you like concrete?
Sold on concrete.
Anytime we can do concrete, I think we do concrete.
I'm sorry.
Anytime, anytime we can do concrete, I think we do concrete. The only thing I might be willing to compromise, that we can split the difference and we keep Northwest Old, Old Town is asphalt and then we don't have to dip quite so much into the reserves.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with it.
Well, I am pretty fine with it.
Doing Northwestern asphalt.
Kinda goes along with TJ, as far as the Old Town, based on the suggestions from staff. But also maybe we might consider the one that goes all the way to the light, the north end of Mill Street is, you know, putting that off potentially for the time being.
The whole project?
For the shape there.
Or whatever.
Or just what it turns.
Yeah, the corner.
What's the name of the street?
Ten.
Yeah, I'm thinking that area, we might consider putting off.
Just a comment there, there's very little traffic that goes, I mean, there's two more streets that go north of Oak Ridge. So you may wanna go to Oak Ridge.
Stop it there.
Or Campbell or Forest Park, I believe is the next street. A lot of that roadway goes over, it's basically poor land, too tinning, so you've got-
But isn't it, 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 it's losing some of the structure of the road, isn't it, right, right in there?
It is.
We need to fix that part. But-
How much money would that save, your suggestion, Steve?
What if we were, David, what do you think on North Mill Street area doing that as asphalt?
Um, well, again, out there you've got mainly residential, that, you know, once you get rid, north of Campbell, I mean, there's no other traffic that's feeding in, so. You know, there's no reason for large vehicles or trucks out, and like Steve said, once in a while, maybe somebody gets lost. So I think it's probably of, again, an area where you'd probably be safer to consider asphalt than you would maybe some other areas.
That's, if we were to do those two in asphalt, we're, we're in budget.
They're still upgrading the road up there.
Upgrading what, uh?
Mill.
Mill. You're gonna fix the problem, but you still do it in asphalt.
Correct.
That's what I thought it was.
Okay. Now that's all I had to say.
That's the general fund reserve.
Oh.
Fifteen point seven.
Yeah, we're still, if the part goes.
So we take Steve's suggestion on the North Mill area and do the Northwest Old Town according to Terry in asphalt?
Yeah, do those two areas in asphalt and everything else in concrete, we're within budget. Okay.
Everybody okay there?
Yep.
Okay. Got it?
Steve?
Got what you need? The next thing we probably need to look at is the, that was, two or three people brought it up about the drainage, the worst drainage areas that are associated with these streets, do we need to do anything about those in the future? I don't, I don't know of any right now.
Generally, aren't any of the, the major drainage projects you have facing you are the ones that we walked you through with the stormwater utility?
Timber Creek and all of them.
Yeah, largely gonna be replacing, stop the streets themselves.
And the stuff in Old Town was just issues with just the general topo, but there's no overall flooding of houses or whatever?
No.
Okay.
Point of clarification, Northwest Old Town is asphalt. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Northeast Old Town is concrete.
Yes, sir. And then that part down there on Mill that you're talking about?
Yeah, you, you mentioned the street Oak something?
North of Campbell, off of the water.
Yeah, stop it somewhere there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number one. Item two. Item three.
Quick question on item three. Any audio, sorry, I missed that, we've got, replaced one of the scoreboards, but what do we do for audio out there?
No, that's four.
Are you talking about three or four?
I want to have one, my apologies, four.
Are you talking about for the part?
For the part.
Yeah, that's four, that's all, go ahead. All right.
Now, I have a question, okay, item four, what, what have we got for audio out there for Call and Games and whatnot? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were still on. Run four now.
We, we, we don't have, P H S.
Yeah.
Anything out there, the baseball association has, uh,
Yeah, they got a little tiny speaker box.
Put a speaker box up there.
Okay.
And we, we've been looking and trying to figure out what we're gonna do over Railroad Park for, for audio at, at football and baseball. Haven't come up with a good system that's portable.
Okay.
So, once we get that one figured out, we'll, we'll go ahead and take a look at Lake Park as well.
Well, so like, you're not using the same thing you did at Lake Park? Where you have audio out there, or used to, I guess.
Well, they came off of the, the association put it more or less a temporary deal up for football and baseball, both just running wires out there. With the expense out of Railroad Park, that's not gonna work the way you did at Lake Park. So we've been exploring, how do we do some wireless deals? Can we put big horns on the scoreboard, what's gonna work? And we've been, been exploring that with a couple of audio companies, and we haven't come up with anything to say that it's gonna work.
I got a couple of quick questions. As I recall, wasn't that zone Z from the neighborhood developers?
All they, that, all that cash comes from development contributions.
Wasn't that originally localized?
It used to be split into multiple zones. There was probably six or seven of them altogether, and it was regionalized by the area of the city and so was-
There's vouchers in this area that money stays for parks.
Yeah, and we blended it into a single zone, uh, twenty years ago, so you can use it for the city.
What's the balance of that? Oh, did I see it already? I don't know.
That's a question.
And then one other quick question is, on scoreboards, is, is there a potential there for sponsorships?
We possibly could do that, uh, but the life of the scoreboard probably goes longer than what we could get in a sponsorship. So there's not that, we haven't been real successful with it in fact. But, but we can, we can put boards up and then explore opportunity for sponsorships, that aside on the bottom, we can always do that.
If we can, that'd be great. Any of the big players, Coca-Cola or Pepsi? Do we have, we don't have anything with that with the concession stands already, since concession stands, concession stands are broke up.
We don't have any foreign rights, they're all different and they, they use multiple products.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Item five. On item five, I'd like to pull that and like to have you just kinda explain that, since there are several large items there that you're doing, and just letting the public know what you're doing there. Item six.
Question on item six, it's a ten-year deal, after ten years, it's renegotiated?
It's renegotiable.
It's, in, in fact, it, it auto renews unless otherwise stated, and, and really, the city is the party that has the ability to opt out.
And then, after ten years, it would be at the same, at the same dollar value?
That is correct. And, and the dollar value that you would be experiencing would be any, any maintenance associated with that fiber optics.
Three hundred two.
Three hundred two's the runtime.
Right, which is, which we're good to go other than maintenance for ten years.
That is correct.
And then ten years, we gotta do another three hundred and two.
It would, it would still be the, the ongoing that you would incur.
Okay, thank you.
That's your, that's your installation.
The figure that Claude just quoted, the three oh two, that's plus the forty-four for equipment, correct? So the total fee is close to three forty-five?
That is correct, the actual equipment, um, is not part of this agreement, it's actually outside the, what we would pay to unite would be the three oh, three oh two.
But totally, it's about, uh, three forty-five, which looks like to me, it's a great savings over the deal that was originally struck.
Huge savings.
For seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, plus it gives us the ability to upgrade and add to in the future, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we're saving over half the money.
Chris did an awesome job on that.
Yeah.
My first check, he lost. We're trying to figure out how we're gonna, five dollars.
Well, and not only that, but now we can start discussing other expenses. Wireless connectivity in parks. Yeah, this originally was just connected on the bottom of the fire stations.
Right, right.
So it was very stripped down.
You, you were looking at connecting four fire stations for roughly seven hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
In fact, when you look at the cost to run fiber out to fire station number six, it was over two hundred thousand dollars in and of itself.
Anything else on six?
Do you want to pull that for the public to hear? That's good news.
I would like that, if, if you feel up to it.
Me?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. Item seven.
I'm sorry. I was gonna pull it.
Seven, seven's regular area.
Where'd they used to have those?
Uh, they had it in several locations, uh, throughout the region, so, had it down at the hall parks in Carrollton, um, which is all concrete and heat, uh, it'd be the first year.
So, um, they originally requested twenty tents, and we're talking about giving them ten, is, was that some kind of negotiated, uh?
That, that was, they came back and.
They came back at?
They rejected their need after they looked at it.
Okay. You will pull that off.
So what's the, uh?
Item eight.
Seven's regular area.
And item nine.
Can I say something about item nine?
Yes, ma'am.
It's actually five ordinances, um, so the motion can be made to approve all five, or if you want to vote on it individually, you'll have to hold them all in power. Now I'll have to read five captions.
I'm, I'm just glad to see this moving forward, 'cause every time I talk to you guys, you're working on it.
Okay, nevermind, then I'm not gonna do it. Uh, Tim. Uh, the code, uh, says, uh, mercantile alarms are required at, uh, twenty-five hundred?
In regards to the furniture and mattress?
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
The, the code for mercantile for fire sprinklers is at eleven thousand square feet, the base code. Locally, we've adopted that down to five thousand square feet for the threshold.
Okay.
We're, 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 we're asking to go to twenty-five hundred feet, because the model code requires fire sprinklers for upholstered, uh, furniture and mattresses when there's a storage occupancy greater than twenty-five hundred square feet or manufacture of those same things over twenty-five hundred feet. So it, it seemed to make sense, and are kind of some logic, that if we've got a store full of them, a mercantile full of them, we should protect them at that same level, because these are big time fires.
All right, thank you.
So it's kind of consistent with how we would count out the other occupancies, too.
I was looking at some of the supplemental material, and we seem to have a threshold much lower on sprinkling than many of the comparison cities. Has that always been the case? Or do you expect those cities to be following along?
The cog, the cog, uh, recommendation for the area is at six thousand square feet for, for all commercial occupancies, basically speaking. And I would say the majority of them have, have, have adopted the six thousand, we went to five thousand in two thousand and six, and, and we're proposing to drop that down to thirty-six hundred square feet, which would be ahead of our survey cities, yes.
We, uh, kind of considered the, there's the safety aspect, but we considered the cost to business coming into the city as a whole? If you've got a, you've got to basically double your sprinkler heads, I mean, what, what's the cost to that?
I'm standing up.
Yeah.
You're putting it in or not?
So it doesn't, it's, if I go into a building that's sprinkled and it meets the five thousand but not the thirty-six?
No, it's when, when you build a building of a certain size, when are sprinklers required?
Okay.
So currently, if you came today and said, I want to build a four thousand square foot office building.
Okay.
It would not be required by our local fire code to sprinkler, you have any sprinklers at all, period. If you're over five thousand, we would, okay? So we're saying bring it down to thirty-six hundred square feet. It, the amount of heads and stuff like that is really dependent on the use and the occupancy, the fire hazard of what's being used, the building's business.
Okay, there's not gonna be a requirement to upgrade existing sprinkler systems?
No, 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 this will be for new construction.
New construction, okay, then I'm fine, thank you.
And as far as costs is concerned, sprinkler heads are, and.
There's also an offset factor because of.
It is, but it does get, it, it does get more costly the smaller, what you're speaking of.
It's like insurance.
The relative impact is greater.
Yeah, it's like insurance, there's a cost, there's diminishing return.
I'm following, but it, it is costier the smaller unit you're building. But, and the reason for that is because of the infrastructure you gotta build to have the sprinkler system itself. Okay, anything else, something, anything else, council? Julie? Liz? Claude? Return. It is seven o'clock, we do have a quorum, we'll call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda tonight is the invocation, uh, laid by Councilman Ferguson, and then we'll have the pledge to both the American and the Texas flags by our own Cub Scout PAC number two, three, three.
Ask y'all to please rise for a moment of silent prayer and keep our, our chief piddle in mind. Thank you.
Katie, you want to bring them down? Lead their leader is Mr. Gerald Ford, and Mr. Ford's gonna bring them down and have them introduce themselves.
Eric Ford, Tony Allen, David Moore, um, DJ Adams.
Well, thank y'all so very much for coming, now you want to lead us in the pledges? Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honors of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much, let's give them a big round. Come back and see us anytime, thank you very much for helping us out tonight.
Next item on the agenda is visitor citizens forum, but this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting, did not have anyone fill out a card or ask to speak. Next item is consent agenda, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. No one filled out a card, but I am gonna ask that we pull item number five. Uh, Councilman Ferguson?
Mayor, I think there was a quest, request for six as well.
Uh, that request was pulled, okay.
Pardon me? I removed.
We, we, we are not gonna, uh, we are not gonna pull item six, did not want to have that pulled.
I was the one that requested.
I was the one that requested. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was Councilman Ferguson.
Okay, uh, move to approve.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we okay then?
Yes.
I apologize for.
The city attorney just explained things.
Okay, thank you, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item five.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve consent agenda with the exception of item five, a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor? All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number five. Approval of supplemental appropriation for prior year encumbrances in the following amounts, general fund, five hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-one, hotel motel, hotel motel tax fund, six thousand two hundred forty, recreation fund, thirty-five thousand, six hundred twelve, crime control district fund, seven thousand nine hundred twenty-five, community activities fund, one thousand, fire training fund, three thousand five hundred nine, grant fund, seven hundred eight thousand, two hundred eleven, water and sewer fund, one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred ninety, maintenance and replacement fund, thirty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-five, and self-insurance risk, risk fund in nineteen thousand, five hundred thirty-nine, and asset forfeiture federal fund, nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine. Each year, the rec, a recommendation is made to supplementally appropriate funds from open purchase orders for the prior fiscal year. As a result, when the items or services are received in the current fiscal year, they are charged to the current year. Unless the current fiscal year appropriations are amended to provide for these charges, funds in the afflicted line item accounts will be short at year. Uh, City Manager, would you please just explain to the public what, what we're doing here and then why we're doing this?
Um, y'all paraphrase, uh, the comments, basically, when we execute a PO in a prior fiscal year that laps over into another fiscal year, it's not part of the budget that you adopt in, uh, October, it's part of the budget from the prior year, and we have to amend the current year budget to provide the purchasing authority that was, uh, existent prior to October one. So, basically, a PO that was executed last year, we're carrying over into this year, and we're amending the budget so that we have, uh, adequate authority to pay off that purchase order during the fiscal year, uh, their current fiscal, fiscal year rather than last year. A good example of that is, uh, we've got a PO to Blackburn Carter, there's, uh, some of your legal advisors related to a landfill case, and they have outstanding, uh, PO in amount, a little more than, I believe, a hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars, and while not all of that might be expended, we will be expending some, and we need the authority to do it in the current fiscal year.
Thank you, sir, just wanted to let the public know that this wasn't something new or something added to the budget.
It's routine every year.
Right. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the supplemental appropriations.
Seconded. I have a motion by, uh, Councilman Vaughn to approve as stated.
Second.
A second by Councilman Ferguson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number seven is consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code, section two dash zero, excuse me, two dash two zero one fee schedule regarding waiver of the Lake Park day use entry fee, section ten dash six nine prohibited acts regarding, regarding use of a BB gun and archery range, approval of an in-kind support using city staff and equipment for the Tonkwa District Club Scout, Scout Day Camp to be held June sixteenth through June twentieth, twenty-two thousand fourteen, as requested by Fu Tran for the Tonkwa District. The Louisville area is served by Tonkwa District of the Boy Scouts of America, each June, the Tonkwa District conducts a Cub Scout Day Camp for boys in the first through fifth grade. With the development of Louisville area, it has become increasingly difficult to find a suitable camp location conveniently located for citizens in the Tonkwa District, has requested the use of Lake Park. Recommendation is the council approve the variance as set forth in caption above and to require the sponsoring organization to meet the city's standard liability insurance requirements. I do have a card here filled out, uh, by. Stephen Woodland is not wished to speak, but is in favor and is here to answer any questions if we have any questions for them. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to, uh, approve per the caption.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented, and a second by, uh, Councilman Tierney, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to thank staff for the work trying to find this location, I know they looked at a lot of different places within the city and, and spent a lot of time trying to come up with something good for the scouts.
Item eighty is consideration of an ordinance abandoning approximately three hundred and thirty-five feet of Ace Lane right-of-way between Valley Parkway and Ace Lane, as requested by Kevin Green with Industrial Developments International LP. The intent of the adjacent property owner and developer, Industrial Developments International LP, is to abandon a three, three hundred and thirty-five foot portion of prescriptive Ace Lane right-of-way. In two thousand and eleven, the city constructed Valley Parkway south of FM thirty forty in realigned Ace Lane to intersect Valley Parkway at a ninety-degree angle. This realignment made a three hundred and thirty-five foot, uh, long section of Ace Lane right-of-way unnecessary, and the street pavement has been removed. Currently, only franchise utilities are located in this section of Ace Lane right-of-way. The developer will provide a utility easement in place of the right-of-way. All the affected franchise utility companies are in agreement to have a utility easement replaced, uh, replaced the right-of-way. Re, uh, recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve.
Vaughn.
Second by Councilman Vaughn?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, councillor, would you please read, I apologize, beg your pardon?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, providing for the abandonment, vacation, and closure of the following street segments, segments, Tuitt, Ace Lane from Valley Parkway, and three hundred and thirty-five feet north of said intersection, and providing for the terms and conditions of this abandonment, vacation, and closure, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, councillor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine is consideration of ordinance as amending chapter four and five of the Louisville City Code, adopting the two thousand and twelve international construction codes and the two thousand and eleven national electrical code, along with certain appendices with local amendments, including the building code, energy code, residential building code, fuel, gas code, plumbing code, mechanical code, fire code, and national electrical code, providing repealers, providing severability clauses, providing for penalties, providing for effective dates, and declaring an emergency. Recommendation is, uh, staff is submitting the two thousand and twelve addition of the international codes and the two thousand and eleven national electrical code with NCTCOG, which is North Central Texas Community of Governments, uh, amendments to the city council. amendments to the city council for adoption. The new codes are necessary to ensure that the city will keep pace with state laws, changing technology, and practices of the construction industry. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I move to approve the acceptance of these codes.
Second.
We have a motion to approve all five of the codes.
All five.
All five of the codes by Councilman Gilmore, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, adopting the two thousand and eleven National Electrical Code with local amendments and its annexes, amending section four dash four-six, four dash four-seven, and four dash four-eight of Article III Electrical Standards of Chapter Four Buildings and Building Regulations of the City Code of Ordinances, providing a repealer, providing severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, adopting the two thousand and twelve International Building Code and its appendices E, F, G, J, K, adopting the two thousand and twelve Energy Conservation Code, adopting the two thousand and twelve International Residential Code and its appendices A, B, C, D, E, G, J, K, M, O, P, Q, adopting local amendments to these codes, amending chapter four sections four dash two-six, four dash two-seven, four dash two-eight, and amending and adding new sections four dash two-nine, four dash thirty, four dash thirty-one, and four dash thirty-two of the Louisville City Code, maintaining sprinkler requirements for townhomes, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, adopting the two thousand and twelve International Fuel/Gas Code and its appendices A, B, C, D, with local amendments, adopting the two thousand and twelve International Plumbing Code and its appendices C, D, E, F, with local amendments, amending sections four dash one-one-one through four dash one-one-four of Article Four Plumbing Standards of Chapter Four Buildings, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Louisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, adopting the two thousand and twelve International Mechanical Code with local amendments, amending section, sections four dash one-three-one and four dash one-three-two of Article Five Mechanical Standards of Chapter Four Buildings and Building Regulations of the Louisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, adopting the two thousand and twelve International Fire Code with local amendments, maintaining sprinkler requirements for townhomes, amending sections five dash nine-one, five dash nine-two, and five dash nine-four, and adopting a new section five dash nine-five of Chapter Five, Article Three Fire Prevention Standards of the Louisville City Code, providing a repealer, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Want to do one more?
Not five, Mayor, five.
Thank you, counselor. I know that was a mouthful. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Yes, sir. We're down to reports. Nika? Bob? Chief? Linda? Chief? Carol? Donna? Brenda? Mr. Ferris? Councilman Durham? Mayor, I want to congratulate and thank the staff for all the work that was done during the icy weather days. It, it was a mess. I know that. And along with the city staff, and that's from top to bottom, I'd like to thank the county, the NCTA, the state. They all pulled together, and we got through it, not real bad, but we did get through. So thank you very much. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I just want to thank our fire department. I had an emergency nine-one-one call at my business this past weekend, and the fire department was there within a matter of minutes, secured everything, and made sure everything was safe, and the police department was right there along with them. And seriously, I couldn't, could not believe how quick they were there. So thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I just want to let everybody know Santa's still roaming some neighborhoods, so he's still got a few more days. I had, I had the privilege of escorting Santa again this year, and it's one of the best things that we do here in the city. Another little thing we do here in the city is we do recycle Christmas trees, so would recommend to hop on the city website and check that out. Actually, the recycling started on December thirteenth. I never have understood why we start it so early, but we do, and it goes through the middle of January. So hop on the website and check that out. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to add to what Rudy said. There was a lot of feedback that showed up on the city staff, I guess, Facebook page that was incredibly positive, a long list of positive comments about how well the roads were maintained, the hard job people did, and the emergency response folks too. So obviously, citizens were pretty satisfied with the job that was done. I was certainly satisfied, and so I think they deserve a big pat on the back. Otherwise, MCL Grand, we've got Cinderella Kids, which is a children's musical, December eighteenth, and another performance on the nineteenth, presented by the Acting Studio. Don't have a time on those, but you can check the mclgrand.com website. Also have a couple of concerts coming up. Sergeant Pepper's Lonely Bluegrass Band on December twentieth at eight PM, and Singapore Slingers, December twenty-first at eight PM. And then, I'm always reminding you, but Fridays, the Visual Arts League has its acoustic Friday Jam at seven PM. Public's welcome, no cost. Bring your guitar, mandolin, or, I don't know, juice harp, whatever you play. And then, the Visual Arts League has an art exhibit going at the MCL Grand Gallery called Black and White, and the, there's an opening reception for that on January fourth at seven PM. If you'd like to come, it's open to the public. And then, the gallery in general is open Tuesdays through Saturdays, one to five, and also during any time when there's a public performance at the MCL. And that's all I have. Otherwise, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd just like to wish the citizens a safe, happy, and merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, we appreciate you being here tonight and what you do each and every day. If you will, pass that on to your coworkers, too. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Just a quick piece of information. One of our electrical providers who's been here in the city for a number of years was, is First Choice Power. They have since closed, they have just recently, this past week, closed their office here in Louisville, so you can't go there, pay your bills, get your stuff, anything. We are, the city is trying to, there are some signs on the door that tell you who to call and what you need to do, but the city's also trying to get, Mr. Conkey's getting some information from them. Should be here at City Hall. If you have a problem or anything, feel free to call up here, and we'll give you the information, who to get in touch with and how to get in touch with. I know I've already been getting some phone calls from some people on that. And again, as I said, on the ice situation, do appreciate what staff did, and I also want to thank our citizens. I was out and about both Friday and Saturday, and, and it was truly amazing to see how many of our citizens here in the community that everywhere, when I would see someone that was stuck, or in a ditch, or whatever, there was always people there that were out trying to get out and help them. It was funny, I know, I put a shovel and some stuff in the back to help, and it was, it's just amazing to see people here in our community that would get out and help one another when they had a situation like that. I know my wife got stuck three times, and people helped her, so I greatly appreciate that, so. And then, as been said, I want to wish everyone a very wonderful Merry Christmas, and I hope you all have a very, very happy New Year, because this will be our last meeting of two thousand and thirteen, and we will see you next year. And in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two, property acquisition, and Section five-five-one point zero-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic and development negotiation, we will now convene into closed session. We'll convene back into regular session. Is there any action to be taken, council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.